Okay, so we're going to begin our Iowa City City Council work session for Tuesday, July the 16th, 2019. And the first topic is to consider a draft resolution on climate action and continue discussions on planned priorities for the near future. So I want to make some suggestions about how we proceed, but you all tell me whether you think it's a good idea or not. So we need to identify the key questions and suggestions that we need to discuss more thoroughly here with regard to the proposed resolution. I personally am very leery of trying to wordsmith the entire resolution in detail here. I mean, I see specific things I think could be changed, but wordsmithing is probably not a fruitful way to spend our time. I think it would be much more fruitful to see if we agree with the general thrust of the whereas clauses and then turn to the, what do you call them, to the actions the resolution calls for, the be it resolved parts. I think that's where most of the meat of the proposed resolution is.
Can you, somebody remind me where that resolution, which document that resolution was in?
Yeah, it's July 11th, IP number four.
Thanks.
Yeah, why don't you get it and then we can turn to it.
I got it. Thanks.
Okay. So if that's okay with you, let's turn to the whereas clauses. I don't know that we need to go through them one by one. I will say, I think there needs to be a whereas clause stating how large and important Mid-Americans and the university's carbon emissions and emission reductions are for achievement of our goals. And, you know, it could just go in there somewhere. I haven't tried to figure out exactly where it would go, but it'd be one of the whereases. The rest of you, do you see any particular whereas clause that gives you reason to pause?
Well, when I get down, one, two, three, four, the fifth one, whereas Iowa City. There's verbiage in here that I guess I haven't seen specifics on and don't know what the studies are behind that in terms of suffering impacts of climate change in the form of air pollution. Maybe that's true. I don't know. I'm uncomfortable voting for something like this when it's not, it's not something I've seen a lot in the news in terms of the air pollution. Extreme heat, I know it's hot now, but we get cycles on the heat. So again, I haven't seen specific data in terms of are we getting more longer extreme heat events? So those are a couple of things. And then, so that, and then the next one, continuing to make some of these things more expensive. Again, I'm not sure where the healthcare piece is coming from. I want to preface this, I guess, let me back up. It's not that I want to disagree with this thing, these things, but if we're going to do this and put it out there, I want it to be as credible as possible and not people looking at this and saying, oh, here's good old crazy Iowa City again, just throwing everything up against the wall, whether, whether there's any studies or facts to back it up. And so, I mean, if people have read certain things and feel really comfortable on these, then fine. I'm just saying, I haven't seen that kind of information and thus personally, I'm not super comfortable with those parts.
With regards to the first whereas you cited, one simple solution could be referencing the climate study that we did a couple of years ago. We worked with a climatologist to help us project what our, you know, both study how the temperature has changed, but also project that into the future so we could cite some findings of that report. It might be more fact-based, or at least...
Yeah, there's substantial hard data in that particular report that we could draw in. I agree with you about the air pollution part. I don't know that that should be drawn into this topic at all, but with regard to extreme precipitation events, more precipitation, greater heat, I mean, those kinds of things. I think they're documented in that report that Jeff just referred to. So if we could sort of bookmark that paragraph and make sure we draw upon that past report, that would be helpful.
And I think including any other comments we have from the IPCC report itself in terms of the empirical evidence, because my understanding that that report was generated by the leading climate scientists in the world. So hopefully, you know, if we need additional empirical, maybe we could draft language in terms of impact from the report.
Yeah, the problem is there are like, I don't know, 100 or more specific findings having to do with...
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, we could probably grab something, but any of that.
It's crucial to refer to that particular report, though, because that's driving the possibility that we will change our goals and all that.
And in regards to that study, I know their recommendation was the net zero, but I'm still in belief that that's, that's a really ambitious goal to get to by 2050, but we do what we have to do.
They actually call for a 100% reduction in carbon emissions. I don't think they call for net zero, but I'm not certain about that, so it'd be good to verify what they do.
Whereas states net zero by 2050. I don't have anything else on the whereases.
I don't either.
I know we're not getting into the weeds here, but one of the questions that I, I mean, I would definitely echo some of the things that Susan said, as well as Rockne. But when we're talking about how this will affect some of our lower income level individuals within our community, you know, here it talks about add an additional pressure on persons and families of low income, now therefore be it. So we do know that this will cause some financial pressures and how will we as a city, you know, what will we do to kind of help with that?
I think that's the equity component of the report. That was a major focus of the report. So when I look at that sixth whereas, you know, it's, it talks very generally, but again, I think we can draw from the equity portions of our report. That way, there's a citation that we can fall back on for this. And I would think when it comes to, you know, what you're going to charge staff with, you're going to ask us to have that same equity lens with our report. So we'll come back to you and we'll have a set of strategies based on what you tell us today. And we'll have to explain at that time how we're taking equity into account. And my guess is you'll see incentive programs that are targeted to help low-income families and individuals, small businesses, or whatever the case may be. So I think that, I think that will remain a focus of ours going forward.
Yeah, with regard to that, it reminds me that surely on a, in a resolution like this, since what we're really doing is proposing, getting to changing parts of our current climate action plan, we should acknowledge as a whereas that we adopted in September 2018, a climate action and adaptation plan, which called for and then specified the emission reduction and by 2025 and by 2050, and then some general statement about lots of other things that it called for, including the equity component. Other whereases may come to mind as we continue this discussion, but why don't we turn to the resolved parts? I'd suggest we go through them one by one because they're more, if you will, more substantive in terms of what we're going to be directing the staff to do. So just for the benefit of people in the audience or watching on television, I'll read each of them, then we can talk about them one by one. So the first is resolved that the city council hereby declares a state of climate crisis, given that the crisis poses a serious and urgent threat to the well-being of Iowa City, its inhabitants, and its environment.
Fine with it.
Yep.
I think we had a lot of discussion on, do we use the word crisis or, and I'm happy to see that word here, because I do think that one of the things that Counselor Taylor said is that if we put in this, some strong words and not actually do it, then that kind of minimizes the plan itself, so.
Yeah, so the action that follows matters. So on that point, I would suggest we add a new clause after the first one, which specifies, and the new clause would specify our new goals for Iowa City's carbon emission reductions, namely 45% and 100%, because unless I misread the resolution, it does not currently state those goals.
It's under the whereas section, Jim.
Where?
It's in the whereas, but it's not in the resolution. Is that important, Eleanor, in terms of what we're resolving to do? Does it matter?
Yeah, there's a difference.
I think if the council wants to adopt that as your goal, you should put it in the resolution.
Yes, I would agree with that, Jim.
Yeah, so it should be a whereas, because that's coming from the IPCC, whatever, but also we need to say, have a resolve thing that says, this is what we're going to do.
Okay. I would agree with that, Jim.
Any disagreement with that?
Good point.
So just, in other words, moving the third whereas below?
No, I think the third whereas should stay right where it is, because that's, that's based on research by the Intergovernmental Panel. So, but what are we going to do? What we're going to do that needs to be a resolve thing, so we resolve that we're, we're going to achieve a 45% and 100% reduction in carbon emissions. That's what I'm saying, is that there ought to be a separate resolved paragraph. I wonder if we should add a further clause saying something about, I don't know what verb to use, I'll use the verb support, that we would encourage and support Mid-American and the University of Iowa to achieve the emission reductions that they currently have planned, or something like that, because, you know, achievement of our goal is pretty dependent on what they're going to do.
That's fine, but doesn't that get a little bit too much into the details? As I look, primarily what we're doing tonight is to identify this target and the time. And there will probably be subsequent work sessions in terms of implementation of that goal. I mean, I'm not strongly objecting to it, but I don't want to get too much into all the actual strategies that we're going to employ.
And I wonder if this, if the second ones that's, that's listed here really does incorporate the University of Iowa and Mid-American Energy. Potentially, we could add their name if we felt that that would be appropriate.
I mean, that was my thought, Jim, is that we're already calling for the coordination.
Well, here's a suggested language, and I really hate to wordsmith, but we could incorporate Mid-American and the university. So like if we said coordinate, it's, we'll continue to coordinate its efforts with local municipalities, comma, Mid-American Energy, comma, the University of Iowa, comma, as well as other local, regional, and state governments, et cetera.
Why don't we just say utilities instead of the actual entity?
Could do.
Utilities and then educational institutions.
Energy utilities.
Yeah, energy utilities and then educational institutions.
Could do. Any objection to inserting that particular language? Energy utilities and educational utilities?
Institutions.
Institutions?
Would that include, I was encouraged, because at the joint entities meeting, the school board presented their plan for climate change. And so they've got a plan in place, so that would include them. And I also was encouraged, because the other communities, when Jim spoke about ours, even the smaller ones around us, wanted to learn more about our plan and wanted to see our plan. So I think that falls right into this. They're already curious about it, because we can't do it alone. We can't, so.
Yeah, and the current language, even as modified, as we just discussed, would include the school board, because it's another local governmental unit. All right, how about the next, what is it, third, oh, one? Resolve, one, two, the third resolved paragraph in the draft text. Yeah, so this one's pretty crucial, isn't it? So do we want to direct the city manager's office to develop and deliver a report within 100 days recommending ways to accelerate Iowa City's climate actions consistent with limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees centigrade? I'd say, just to get it out there, that we don't need to be referring to the limiting global warming to 1.5%, because we've already said we want to reduce our emissions by 45% as of 2030. So we could ask for the report to recommend ways to achieve that 45% reduction by 2030 and be on track to achieving a 100% reduction by 2050.
I'd agree with that, Jim.
Yeah, it's fine.
I do have a question about, more so the process of this. If we're going to have an opportunity to weigh in on it, if the public is going to have an opportunity to weigh in, weigh in on it?
That's one of the where, the resolved causes.
Okay. All right. I didn't know if that was like, a little bit independent of, but that's totally acceptable.
Can I back up on one previous clause?
Sure.
You'd indicated in, it says, "Further resolved, Iowa City will continue to coordinate its efforts with local municipalities, as well as local, regional, and state governments to accelerate actions to rapidly eliminate greenhouse gas emissions." Shouldn't be rapidly reduce greenhouse gas emissions? I mean, because when we talk about a net zero, as I understand that concept, and maybe Martha's watching, she can quote you right there, we're not necessarily talking about elimination of fossil fuels as we're trying to get to net zero. And so, correct or not? I mean, so for example, if we were able to do an offset with production and increase, you know, renewable energy production and get a plus, and there was a credit, a deficit in terms of our carbon that is being admitted, you could still get to that net zero, which is the goal. See what I'm saying? It should be reduced as opposed to eliminate, because I think this could also, with it, with us wanting to make this actually work, and we're totally prepared to Susan's comment, for people to criticize us, whatever, but I think if we're talking about eliminating, I just, greenhouse, carbon emissions, I think that'd just be taken out of context.
I'm okay with rapidly eliminating, I'm sorry, rapidly reducing greenhouse gas emissions.
But other than that, I don't have any other for that clause.
Yeah, thanks for actually reading that clause, because I had not read the whole, allowed the whole clause. All right, so how about the, the part of the, I lose track of these things, the, the third resolved paragraph in the draft text? How about the part where we would direct the city manager's office to develop and deliver a report within 100 days?
I'm interested here, what Jeff has to say. I mean, you've got, you said you have a lot of stuff already, but what's your reaction to that from a staff perspective?
Well, I guess I'd want to flip the tables a little bit back to you. Just what exactly are you envisioning in this report? We can walk you through a series of, basically present a scenario that says, here's how we can get to the 45% target. We also need to recalibrate our, our emissions, because the IPCC draws off of the 2010 as a baseline, where previously we've drawn off of 2005, so we need to do a lot of recalc. But what I would think comes of this report is, here's how we're going to get to the 45%. And if you want to go to the 100%, you know, now we're getting into the, you know, the long term, and it's a little harder for us to project exactly how we're going to do that. I think it's reasonable to expect that we could outline a plan to get, get us to the year 230, 2030, to meet that first goal, but you have to understand it's going to be fluid. We, we started to kind of sketch that out in the presentation that Brenda gave you last time. We said, you know, if Mid-Am does this, and, and university does this, and, and the city, you know, meets X, Y, and Z, then we can get there. We just need to beef up on how we're going to influence those partners and how we're going to make reductions in our own operations to get there. So I don't have a problem doing it. I just want to make sure that when we come back, it's going to meet your expectations.
I think Jeff is on track, don't you, in the sense of, again, Brenda already did that very preliminary sketch. We also have the basic foundation in the contracted report that we already have, so we're not instructing him to start all over. It's essentially just to give us that roadmap based upon the existing plan, you know, which parts maybe we need to accelerate, and us realizing we can't have a perfect crystal ball, and it is 100 days. But I think to the 100 days piece of it, you know, we need to be, you know, obviously respectful of staff's time, but I think there is something about 100 days historically, when you have these events of great magnitude, that we do need to emphasize that, hey, this is, and for city council, this is very quick. This is a very quick change and update. So I do like the 100 days, realizing there will be some limitations in terms of the report that we get, but I think what Jeff had described is sort of on track, what I would want.
The other thing I would add to that, in 100 days, is I don't have a problem with 100 days. If you're declaring a crisis, 100 days is probably pretty reasonable for us to come back to you with a plan. But, you know, understand, the way I look at this, we're not going to come to you and say, okay, here's the 10 actions we're going to take to get there, because we don't know if any one of those may fail or, you know, produce in the way we think. We'll try to sketch out a whole number of actions and almost provide a menu of opportunities for you. Here's what we can do in the waste sector, here's, here's some possibilities in the building sector. Some are going to be policy-driven, some are going to be incentive-driven, and they're going to be tied to revenue increases that you will need to consider. So we would, we would probably provide some type of menu of options, and then maybe a staff recommendation for a collection of those menu items to get us there. And then the public, I assume your, your climate action advisory board, the council is going to have input, and I expect that that would change before the council finally adopts it.
Well, I think we need to be a little more explicit about this. So when I was writing my own notes in preparation for this, what I wrote was that the, in 100 days, the staff would come back to us with a report recommending specific actions we can take to achieve the 45% reduction by 2030. And I jotted down a list of like six actions that I think of, and I don't know that they would all be effective or not, but they come to mind. I can list them here in a minute if you want. But I think we need to be more clear about that. I mean, there is clearly uncertainty about what Mid-American really will do, what, with regard to its emission reduction, what the university really will do. So we can sort of bound that a little bit and have a fairly good idea of what we are expecting, but then there's the leftover part. And a tiny part of that is city government operations as such. What about the rest? That's what I'm interested in, is the rest.
That would be addressed in this, too.
Yeah.
I like what Jeff has presented. I think for them to give us a menu of items, and whether we take that back to the Climate Action Committee, or just, you know, also the public in general to get their, their input and response on that, for us to be able to look at it in terms of what are the budgetary implications of some of the choices on that list, which ones we think, you know, based on the studies and stuff, will give us the biggest impact in terms of those reductions. So I think that is a good way, you know, for us to start with that report, with that menu of items like Jeff has suggested, and then get more public input, look at the budget implications, and then refine it from there.
I think the biggest concern that I have is, if we're talking 2030, getting to 45% and then 2050, if, if, just making sure that whatever the homeowners have to do is spaced out, so that it's not all coming, you know, we don't deal with them, you know, now with 2030, which I'm not exactly sure what the plan will be presented, but I just want to make the statement that I do think that having that end goal of 2050 is important, because then that really does matter how the plan is laid out throughout. And so, just wanted to, again, just make that statement, that it, to get to the 45 is good, but I really think that you, you have to plan to 2050 in order to get to that 45, which I do know that the, I think there is global or like large plans to get to the 2050, but I'm not, I'm not sure that it's really sectioned out and how it will be achieved by 2030, which I know that's going to be developed. But again, I want to just make mention that when we're talking about homeowners and, because they're a large part of this, we might want to try to have some goals set for them throughout the process.
Well, I mean, I agree, but I think you also have to look at the fact that when you have a home that currently exists, there's not, I don't believe there's a whole lot that we can or would be doing as a city that is going to force them to spend money. I mean, we can't, we can't go in and force them to change or add insulation to their house and, you know, those kinds of things. So I look at that more as what potential incentive programs, particularly for lower-income people, can the city provide to help them, you know, whether it's new insulation or more energy-efficient furnace, and we already have some of those programs in place now, but those sorts of things. And I know there's people in the community that are already gearing up to have a much more formal process in terms of getting information out and sharing that in terms of how people can either build more efficiently or retrofit more efficiently and cost-effectively, et cetera. So I think we're going to see partners within the community as well, and I think that's going to be important.
So on that point, I would like to recommend that we have the staff look at creating a new, basically GO bond program, a pretty large one. I don't know how to bound it, but a pretty large bond program that would provide financial assistance for energy efficiency improvements in existing buildings. And that should be linked to our efforts to make housing more affordable, because especially for renters and lower-income homeowners. So if we can tie those two things together and reduce the cost of living by getting energy expenses down while also... energy expenses down, while also, that will help with the affordability challenge. So the numbers I put down were $5 to $10 million in this bond program. Now, I don't know where I got those numbers really, other than out of my head, or, you know, whole cloth out of my head. But we, you know, we spend $1 million on a road improvement, we spend a bunch of money on something else. This is pretty important. If we have a crisis situation, why don't we identify the money that we're going to use to get the hardest thing, which is reduce natural gas emissions in existing buildings?
I think one of the things we need to be really careful of in things like that is leave it to the staff to figure out and give us advice on financing, because certain things you can legally bond for, and other things you have to go out and have the public vote on. So I think it would make sense to leave that to Jeff and Dennis and the other people. You know, if we thought we wanted to spend a certain amount on a certain type of program, how could we do that? Where would finances come from?
And I'm not necessarily looking at tonight that we're outlining the solutions.
No, I agree.
One thing I will mention is, you know, in preparing this draft, and also looking at, you know, the question of, okay, we're asking for a report in 100 days, what is this report? So as I often do, I tried to find such a report, and I sent it to you all, I don't know, maybe two information packets ago, the response of the city of Vancouver, Canada. And I understand that Iowa City is not Vancouver, Canada. But nevertheless, you know, the broad-brush issues that any city faces are essentially the same, right? You have transportation, you have building, you have questions regarding, you know, what do you do with your waste? You have issues regarding how products are consumed in your community. Where are they coming from? What's the embodied carbon in those products? And I was really impressed, not only with the vision of what Vancouver had generated, but also that it was framed in the context of a crisis. You know, we need to ramp up the urgency of what it is we're dealing with. That's why we're having the resolution. Vancouver has an overarching concept of Green Vancouver. There are all kinds of initiatives that are included under that umbrella, of which this response to the energy crisis is one. So they've been working on it a long time. I think we can learn from Vancouver. I think we can learn from other cities as well. I mean, that's, there's a lot of work that's been done on all the issues that we're just mentioning. You know, how do we do this? How do we address the residential-scale energy consumption to heat and cool your building? When do you intervene or provide incentives? Well, it's often going to be when that water heater is replaced. You know, so you don't go in now and say, everyone by, you know, the end of 2020 is going to replace their water heater. But, you know, you do strategically try to factor in when it's, at what point in time is it appropriate to offer the incentive? But I think the details will flow once we have an idea. And again, that idea that informed me was looking at Vancouver's response, partly because, you know, they do seem, they've been working on this for probably 20-plus years, and have a pretty good idea of what, where they're going with it. There may be others, as I said, but...
I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry.
I was really impressed with how they not only gave the information, but framed it in a way that I think would be very accessible to the general public, and give a sense of the scope and magnitude of what it is we're talking about.
What I was going to say is, I think we've had a lot of good discussion and ideas. I'd like to see us try and work our way through the resolved pieces, or we're not going to get done with this. I think we're going to have plenty of time to come back and talk about more of these ideas of like, okay, let's use Vancouver as a real learning tool and those kinds of things.
My last thought, I could see where staff, at certain intervals between now and 100 days from now, has a, you know, could prepare a draft, maybe an outline of what the report might entail. So we have an idea as we move forward, what the end product will be.
Okay, I certainly don't object to moving forward, moving ahead more quickly. I do want to state, we don't need to have a discussion about it. I want to state four other suggestions I have about specific ideas that the staff could look into as part, when it's preparing a report and returning, coming back to us. So I already mentioned one. The second is to require more stringent energy standards, as we currently do with regard to affordable housing, for new buildings as a condition for rezoning in the Riverfront Crossings District.
Doesn't that get into the solutions?
Absolutely it does. And I want to state them so that they'll be part of the thinking about what could be done. And with regard to these specific things, I've been thinking about them for a pretty long time. So I just want to at least get them out there. The third would be, also require more stringent energy standards for new buildings in other areas outside the Riverfront Crossings District, but only if it's combined with financial incentives. So it'd have to be something like you had suggested, Susan, that, you know, require something, but provide financial assistance at the same time. And it'd be a condition of rezoning. I don't know if I actually said that. The fourth would be to require the use of an energy use benchmarking tool for major buildings, like is done in Des Moines. I don't know if we can do it, but Des Moines has, and, you know, I want to get it out there as a possibility. So that's enough. But, you know, by focusing some attention on new buildings, we can affect the margin. And right now, we have no way of affecting the margin, each new building. Each new building should signal to the public that we're taking this seriously, that we face a crisis, and we're going to do something about it. So that's one way to do it. Okay, so moving on to other paragraphs in the proposed resolution. Let's see, this next one reads, "Further resolve that city council intends to schedule a presentation of and public hearing for these strategies to achieve emission reductions at an accelerated pace."
I would agree with that.
That makes sense to me.
May I just clarify? When you're talking about accelerated pace, and accelerate is used a couple of times in here, my understanding is that accelerate refers back to the goals that we're setting. So you're not looking at 45%, you know, at 2025. We're talking 45% in 2030, and that's accelerate?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we okay with that?
It might be nice to say that, though, because it's confusing otherwise. I mean, you've set a goal, so why aren't we referring back to the goal in these resolved clauses?
Yeah, so could state...
We could work on that.
...presentation and public hearing for these strategies to achieve the emission reduction goals established by the city council. Or words to that effect.
I have a question, too, just about the terminology, "public hearing." We use those at council as a formal, legal type of construct for rezonings and things like that. So I'm just wondering if, rather than public hearing, maybe looking at some other verbiage there. I mean, a hearing is, for the city council, a hearing is a public, legal proceeding that we have to have for certain items that we do. This would not come under that, so I would just, and I just leave it to staff.
Something like a public presentation and comment, period.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need a wordsmith here, like you said, but I just have that concern when I see public hearing.
Okay, the next resolve paragraph is, "Further resolve that to meet Iowa City's ambitious greenhouse gas emission reduction targets, staff recommend new direct actions policies and economic incentives for the city's climate action and adaptation plan." I think that's implied in the third one, about a report within 100 days, as we've discussed it.
I thought the same thing. Are you calling to excise that portion, Jim?
Yes, given the discussion we've already had, yes. All right, and the next one in the draft is, "Further resolve that to meet Iowa City's, no, we already did that, further resolve that Iowa City's climate mitigation and adaptation planning, policy, and program delivery shall ensure a just transition for all its people." So I'm very familiar with the phrase "just transition," but I'm not sure the broader public is. Do you think it's, the meaning is clear enough as it's written? I mean, it refers to what you were concerned about, Bruce, but, yeah.
I think it does.
Yeah. Okay, so we can keep that one? All right. "Further resolve that as Iowa City works on climate mitigation, it shall continue to advance climate adaptation efforts to address unavoidable current and future climate change I don't see any difficulty with that. How about the rest of you?
I don't either.
Can we move on, then? All right, somewhere in this mix, maybe at this point, I think we need another resolved clause. So let me read it and see what y'all think, or hear what y'all think. So it'd be, "Reserve that the city council shall work with the staff and Climate Action Advisory Board to clarify and enhance the role of the CAAB, and in its budget discussions, in the council's budget discussions, consider creating or funding a new full or part-time position to bolster outreach and engagement efforts and make climate action more of a community-wide endeavor."
I'm expecting that to come out of the 100 days report.
You're not expecting that to be in there?
No, I am. I'm expecting that issue, you know, as well as many others, to be included in the report.
So you don't think there's any need for a clause like this?
I think it's too specific. I do at this point. Here's the declaratory, and then we're saying in the future, we'll get into the details.
Okay. Let's see, I think we're at the last resolved, right? So resolve that city council will work with the city manager's office to develop a budget that enables urgent climate action in the near term, while ensuring a climate-resilient future for Iowa City in the long term.
Sounds good to me.
Any objections to that? Okay, so maybe we ought to reflect quickly on the whole, but I guess, with that in mind, I believe it's crucial that we be clear to ourselves and clear to the public that what we're doing with regard to climate action and trying to help avoid long-term disaster must be done by thinking also about the present and the effect of our present-day actions on the broader public. And that's where this "just transition" part comes in, and it's where your comments about homeowners and so on comes in. So I think especially with regard to anything having to do with affordable housing, or the challenges that especially lower-income people face in our city, we've got to tie these things together, it seems to me. So...
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think the question of integrating this plan into our current initiatives, our strategic plan, are critical. You know, it cannot be sort of a, sort of a, something with a single focus. It's something that should integrate with our own, our own community, the initiatives the council has already undertaken. I think I can see it easily along the lines you were describing, perhaps give a different direction to the affordable housing plan. Not to say that we wouldn't, we would abandon what we have, but this need, this factor needs to be incorporated into our strategy. So it's, all the co-benefits. I see nothing that, what I often like to say when talking about this is, one could proceed with all of the actions that this would generate, and they would be beneficial to the, to the public and to the community, without even considering the climate action impacts. I mean, they all have benefits in and of themselves, but there is the urgency because of the climate. So it's, in fact, many of the things that would, I think, will fall under this report are things we already have underway. So it's simply a matter of accelerating the pace.
Any other comments about the resolution as a whole and the general direction we're providing staff at the moment? Jeff, do you have any questions, or you need something more specific from us about anything?
No, we'll talk about it at a staff group level, and when this comes back to you, if there's any clarification needed, we'll let you know. But I think I get the gist of what you're asking for.
I think I'd like to make one further suggestion. Several years ago, like, I don't know, 25 or 30 years ago, Darrell Courtney, then mayor, and some other people on the council, I believe, did a series of presentations around the city about, I think, a proposed bond that was going to fund the South wastewater treatment plant. Do you remember this, Eleanor? I've heard, I remember Darrell telling me about this, you know, years ago. So they went to various parts of the city and met with the broader public and said, here's what we have in mind, and here's why we think it's a good idea, and we're looking for your support, and so on, that kind of thing. I would like to recommend that we be thinking of doing something very, very similar after we get a staff report back from the, from the city staff, and have clarity about what we're going to be calling for with regard to responding to the crisis.
Yeah, right.
I have one further comment. It really is related to residents within our community getting information. We know that we can mail out a lot of stuff on climate action, and some people really don't understand, you know, all the elements that they can do themselves to even impact climate action. And so I know that we had someone from the public, you know, come and talk about, you know, this, you know, campaign where people are going out to the residents and kind of explaining. I'm not saying that that needs to be a part of this, but I do think that a special effort to ensure that the residents of our community are informed of what they can do. Today, someone told me that they added solar panels to their home, and I'm thinking, that is awesome. And I asked a question that I typically won't ask someone, but I asked, do you mind telling me what that costs? Because I am not familiar. I mean, I get the flyers in the mail, and it, you know, says $10,000, $20,000, and you're like, okay. And, you know, not today, maybe I'll, you know, research this in the future. But surprisingly, the individual said that the difference between what they'll be paying with the solar panels, and what they'll be paying to the energy company, that amount for 12 years will they pay to pay off their solar panels. And so for that individual, you know, it doesn't cost much more, in a way. I did not remember if they told me that they put a down payment down, but they had researched a couple of years ago, and it was way out of their budget. And of course, that company reached out to them again and said, hey, we got this awesome program. So I think, my point being is, when you're talking about climate action, when someone gets it in the mail, it could be overwhelming. And I'm not sure how to really reach the residents to get it to a level that they can feel empowered to, you know, tackle this, because it is going to take all of us to do it. So I just wanted to at least emphasize... So I just wanted to at least emphasize, the information that we get to the residents, we need to really be thinking a little bit outside the box of how to really impact and empower those within our community.
Yeah, fair enough. Any other comment about the draft resolution?
The only super brief comment is just as another template, is the effort that the school board had did to persuade people on the bond, I thought was a good example of community outreach in terms of identifying the need, the cost, and the benefits. So shout out to the school board.
Okay, I think that means we can move on to our next topic. Clarification of agenda items. I want to mention to you, it's not an agenda item, but I want to mention that I currently am planning to, to read a statement about the originally planned targeted raids on undocumented residents. I think right now, I feel like I'm going to play it by ear. I may or may not do it, but don't be surprised if I, don't be surprised if I do it. Because my, my uncertainty has to do with the fact that there, as best I know, there have not been any significant raids yet. So we'll see. All right, how about agenda items?
Maybe just to see if there's one piece of correspondence relating to deer. So maybe staff could, I understand there was another unsuccessful effort, but there's a glimmer of hope in terms of the deer population issue. Jeff, I don't know.
Yeah, Mayor Throgmorton, Councilman Teague joined staff in going to the NRC meeting last week in Boone, Iowa. We had a good, healthy discussion, probably an hour and a half discussion with the NRC members, and it was really a discussion. They gave us, I think, pretty clear expectations. While we were not successful, the, ultimately, the vote failed two to five. I think we have very clear direction from them on what we need to do to move forward, and that is really to do three things. Put some more certainty around the bow hunt was probably the biggest one. Language in our plan referred, or in our resolution, excuse me, referred to doing bow hunts if necessary, and they were clearly wanting something more stronger, a stronger commitment to where we will do bow hunts in the next four years, following a year of sharpshoot. They wanted us to go back and think about our target, and we cleared up some miscommunication with them. If you recall, we started off at 25 deer per square mile as our target. Currently, we're up around 80 in some areas of the community. We had received some correspondence from the chair that suggested that we should lower that down to 10, and we clarified that that was really just their suggestion based on some of the comments that, and that they had heard at our meetings. So we're going to have a discussion with you on August 6th about what you think that appropriate target should be, 10, 25, or some other number, but they were very clear in that that's a local decision that they want us to think about, so we can explain, you know, what the difference between the 10 and the 25 may be for our community. And then lastly, they want us to provide a written annual report to them after our sharpshoot and subsequent bow hunts, which is something that we're more than happy to do. So with your approval, we'll present that plan on August 6th, and, and I do think we can get the votes then and conduct a sharpshoot this winter.
I think I'd elaborate just a little bit, maybe you want to as well, Bruce, but I thought it was a fruitful and frank exchange with the commissioners. I think we, as Jeff said, did engage in dialogue. Some of the dialogue involved the commissioners, and they may well be watching right now, so if they are, "Hi, how you doing?" Some of the dialogue involved, I think, as many as four commissioners saying they had observed at least one, I think our last commission, our council meeting when we were explicitly addressing the deer management plan. And I think it's fair to say they took significant umbrage at many of the comments that they observed being made or read in the newspaper, either coming from council members or coming from the public. It wasn't clear to me who specifically they were referring to, but they definitely had watched the, the video or whatever of the, of the meeting and just weren't pleased. I think there's some tension there. They want bow hunting, and many of them are bow hunters. And for me, that raises some questions which I have addressed to Eleanor, and I think she'll be able to comment on them at our next meeting, but not tonight. I'm not going to ask her to do that. But we are much closer to having a plan they will approve. That's very clear to me. I would be very surprised if we did not, if they did not approve a plan that conforms with what Jeff just said in terms of responding to what they told us during the meeting.
Are we pretty much going to adopt like an Ames-type plat, plan? I mean, are there cities that have already been approved? Is that sort of the...
Well, we don't have the specifics of a bow hunt prepared. We would really focus on getting the sharpshoot done right away, and then while that's in progress, we would put together the bow hunt parameters, and that's going to take a lot of dialogue with the council, too. Where, where do you want to see bow hunts? Where don't you want to see bow hunts? What, what's the, the window? Do you want to go, what a lot of cities do is just follow the hunting season. Do you want to shrink that window down a little bit? I think we had one commissioner, and I think there was agreement with others, that said, you know, "It has to be meaningful." And for that commissioner, it was 30 days or more. So we have to put that together. We have to, you know, what kind of qualifications do we expect from hunters? There's safety courses, there's proficiency courses. We need to do some more research about how other cities do that, and then we're going to have to present that to you and ultimately to the NRC.
I'm going to save my comments for our next meeting. I, I think you both have really expressed the views of the NRC. I will say one thing, and that is, kudos to both Jeff and Mayor Jim for their presentation. I really do believe that they did our city justice in sitting and definitely engaging in conversation with the NRC. But one thing in particular that I really appreciated, in the midst of what the NRC wanted, which is, you know, it was very clearly bow hunting, I heard our mayor say specifically several times, the feelings of our council, as well as the majority of the individuals that we've heard within our city, and their desire not to do bow hunting. And so the compromise, you know, the compromise that council did collectively through the resolution did show to the NRC our desire to work with them, but I also felt that our mayor definitely made it very clear that our community as a whole does not want the bow hunting, but if this is the only option that we have, this, we have to deal with our problem, and that's the deer. And so that's why we went to Boone, Iowa, to really talk about, "How can you help us with our deer issue?" So kudos to our mayor, kudos to Jeff. You all did well. I'm happy I got to sit in the back.
Kudos to you, Bruce, for finding the place. I mean, we had a lot of trouble...
Yes, it was a challenge.
One of the commissioners is the most, the most recent appointee to the commission is a woman who has served as, what, a county commissioner, I think she said?
I think county supervisor.
Well, I would think county supervisor, but I thought I remembered the term county commissioner. Anyhow, she's served in that position, so at some point during the meeting or right after, she said, "I've been in your shoes. I understand your situation. I totally understand why you want to have your own plan, not, you know, kind of feel compelled to adapt to the commission." Nonetheless, the commission has, it made its vote, and our guidance from the commission is very clear.
Maybe just super quick for the public's benefit, and I hate to put you on the spot, Eleanor, but is, obviously, this is the body that we go through, but does the statute provide any objective criteria for them to deny or grant a bow hunt, or is it just left? Because I think what I'm having trouble with is just sort of this, and, you know, and again, we respect them, we want to do this, we think they're doing a great job, but it just seems like we're, that they, they almost have unlimited discretion as to what we can and can't do, and that the statute doesn't give any parameters. And if I put you on the spot, I'm sorry, but it just seems strange to me that there's so much discretion that they have.
I mean, my, we've looked at it.
Yeah.
Obviously, through the years, they own the deer, essentially, is what it is, and you're talking about abuse of discretion standard, and no, I don't think they have to give any kind of technical...
It's just whatever they say.
It's an, it's an abuse of discretion standard, lack of substantial evidence, you know, stuff like that. So, but I can detail that more if you'd like.
I personally would like to know a little bit more, but, you know, I had communicated about that, so I'd rather not talk about it more right now.
Yeah, and I was just saying, in the future, it's just sort of nice, I think, for the public's benefit, just to know sort of that dynamic.
Okay, any other comment about agenda items?
Well, just mention John Balmer's question about McColster under correspondence, HC. I believe, he asked if this was a road diet, and it is not a road diet. It's an extension of McColster, which is a two-lane road, until it intersects with Sycamore. So there's, it's not a road diet. Correct, Jeff? I mean, I, I mean, there are other aspects...
Building a new road.
We're building a new road, and it's not a lane reduction concept. It's extension.
The travel lanes are going to be narrower than they are on other parts of that roadway, but you also have bike lanes, so the amount of concrete, I don't know the specific measurements, but the amount of concrete is probably not much different. It may even be more with the bike lanes.
I think John was, John Balmer was using the term rather loosely, not in any kind of technical way, but he, he's just objecting to the idea of having the kind of design that he understands we are promoting for that area. And I think it would be great if John could be invited, you know, former mayor and all that. I think it'd be great if he could invited to come to the, the presentation that Opticos is going to make, just so he can observe and learn from whatever it is that Dan Perogue says.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're getting into the design of McColster at that work session, but I'm, I'm happy to reach out to Mayor Balmer and have a conversation with him.
Well, I would just comment, you've heard me say this before, I totally agree with what John Balmer's saying. I mean, this, McColster starts on the west side of Iowa City as an arterial at 45 miles an hour, and then goes to 35 miles an hour, and then we're going to go to 25 miles an hour with parking on the sides of the street. And I think people who've been waiting for 10-plus years or 15-plus years for this to get all the way around the south side of the city, and when that opens up and it's only 25 miles an hour and parking on the sides, I think we're going to hear a lot of blowback from community members.
I wanted to just mention IP8E, and that's from Jeffrey Ford.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, Jeffrey Ford, and that's fair and equitable city, is what he wrote about. Just going to read a little bit here from his submission. "It is critical that in its pursuit of fair and equitable city that the council wrestles with the impact of its property taxes and therefore city budget on the affordability of housing within the city. A sustainable and healthy city budget is essential to the foundation of an equitable and fair environment to all members of the community." He further does state, "Our community, we also want to be able to attract individuals with higher incomes and their ability to contribute to the community, but it really is where we want to ensure that, when we're thinking about the budget and all this other stuff, that we are taken into account that we're fair and equitable to everyone within our city." And so I just wanted to make mention of Jeffrey Ford's letter that was sent.
It's interesting that Jeffrey would make, express the concern about increasing property tax payments and that kind of thing, when at the same time, we have just received the minutes of a meeting of the Housing and Community Development Commission wherein some commissioners on that, on that particular commission say, "Hey, you guys can just increase the property or your property tax revenue and use that to greatly enhance the affordable housing, address the affordable housing problem." So Jeffrey says, "Reduce the taxes," basically, and, and the commission is saying, "Increase the taxes," and they're both talking about affordability. I think there's a kind of a, a gap there, don't you think?
Sure. I'm not saying we need to increase or decrease. I just wanted to read his letter.
Fair enough.
And make the statement that affordable housing is important within our community.
Okay, you want to move on to the information packets, starting with the July 3 packet?
I appreciated the IP2, you know, the memo regarding evaluation plans for the conversions and the travel lane widths. I think that's really, will be helpful as we move forward to better, to do kind of a post-project evaluation of, you know, the outcomes, basically, in terms of safety, providing, you know, what the goals of the project, which were to improve safety and, and choice, how effective have they been in terms of meeting those goals? So I appreciate that, and I think it's something, it's, I think it's a useful exercise in a number of areas of work that we do, so I'm pleased that we'll be seeing that.
Let me add a little bit more detail to that comment. As I understand this memo, you know, we've talked a lot about the safety impacts of 4 to 3, and we've cited a lot of Iowa Department of Transportation empirical studies, the 20 different road diets, the anticipated reduction in accidents, but if I'm not mistaken, in the First Avenue, the actual data from the First Avenue 4 to 3 conversion, they've shown a 20% reduction in overall number of collisions from approximately 17.4 to 13.0 per year. Am I, am I getting that correct? So that's huge. What I love about that is, is we have this deep reservoir of information from the Department of Transportation. In our very first implementation on a significant level, we see the, now, that's about what we're expecting for a lot of these, 20 to 25%. Some of the studies say as high as 47%, and I think that is what this is, is about, coupled with, obviously, you know, reasonable traffic flow. But if any of us had to choose between a 30-second to a minute delay and a 20% reduction, I think to me, that, that properly frames this issue. So I was very pleased to see that empirical forecast being borne out of what we've actually
And mentioned that it could be, it'll be two years before we see the data on our current conversions, but I think that's, that's a good timeframe, and hopefully is going to show a trend also, which will be good.
Okay, you want to turn to the July 11 packet? So on IP number six, there's an email from me about whether any one of our council members would like to be part of the selection committee for the alley, downtown alley RFP. So the first question is, do you think we ought to have a member on that committee? And then secondly, would any of you like to volunteer if, in fact, we would have a member?
My own take is, unless anyone really wants to do it, is that no. And the reason why I say that is, first of all, I love that they reached out to us, but all those different projects that the downtown district has been doing, I've been loving nearly every single one. nearly every single one. And certainly, it's always nice to get that council impact and input, but I really trust that leadership's judgment as to what they think is going to make sense. So that'd be my position, unless someone really wants to participate.
No, I agree, Rockne. I think it was exciting, it's a great project. I really look forward to seeing it take place, and I thank Betsy for thinking about inviting us to possibly serve on that with them. But by the list of who she already has on the committee, it looks like they'll have a great, great bunch to make decisions, and, but I don't think it's necessary for us to sit on it.
In part because you're doing such a good job, in my view.
I would agree, it's fine.
Okay, without objection, I'll contact Betsy and tell her that we don't see a need for a council member to be on that committee.
But we very much appreciate them inviting us and hope that they'll continue to extend that into the future.
Just so you know, Simon is on that committee, so if you have questions about it in the future, you're in good hands.
Simon is the blue shepherd, we'll trust.
Wendy and I will both submit written comments.
They'll do a great job, right.
All right, moving on.
IP 2, we should do the KXIC. Kelly's not here to push us into that, but we should look at those dates so that we get those done.
Yeah, we have, Councilmember Teague has agreed to be scheduled for tomorrow, and staff will take the next two in July, so starting with August 7, we have open dates.
So I could do the 7th or the 14th, and that would be timely for me in terms of the seven-week rotation?
I could do August 28.
I'll do September 11.
So why don't I literally sign up for the 7th, then, unless somebody else really would like to have that?
I could do the 21st.
Oh, I was hoping to do that, but unless.
Oh, you can, okay, that's fine.
I try to do it every six weeks or so.
So I have John on the 21st?
I'll do the September 4th, then.
All right, so we just have August 14th left.
I can do the 14th.
All right.
Or should we sign up Mas?
We don't know our schedule, so.
No, I'm just playing. I'll do the 14th.
All right, good. That was easy. With regard to IP number five, pending work session topics, I just want to note that on August the 6th, we're going to continue our discussion about the development review process, which will have been initiated by our meeting with Opticos and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Also, on August 6th, I failed to put it on there, but we have our, your evaluations of my position, city attorney and city clerk as well. So we can start that at 5:00. If you prefer to start that at an earlier time, that's your call.
I would say earlier if people can be available.
You think 4 o'clock or 4:30?
Yeah, I'd say 4.
Yeah, I'd say 4, see if we can do it at 4:00.
And when will that be held?
In the conference room.
In that room, yeah. All right, IP number eight, the memo from Jen Jordan, Resource Management Superintendent, about waste minimization programs. So, thanks to Jen for providing that update, but I do have a question about it, and it's simply this, how much of the, how much of the tonnage collected through the city's recycling program actually gets recycled? It's my understanding that the material goes to the facility over in the Quad Cities, and is processed there in a pretty sophisticated way. And I'd love to do a tour of it, actually, it sounds really fascinating, but I don't know how much of the tonnage sort of disappears along the way.
Okay, we can get to that.
I think we need to discuss IP number nine also briefly. It's concerning emails about solid waste collection in the peninsula. So Jeff, just give us a brief update on that.
Quick update, we sent out letters, and I think I'd shared with the council some of the justification for us making that move. It's, to say it's less than ideal situation for our current waste operations is an understatement, but we failed to recognize that there was language in the subdividers agreement from when the city was working with the peninsula 15 years ago that requires us to pick up from the alley. So Jen and Ron have reached out to the homeowners association, have let them know that we no, we no longer are planning to deliver the carts in early August, and that we'd like to schedule another meeting with them to discuss options. I think in addition to it being less than ideal for us, I don't know that it's great for the residents either. We're not able to use our carts out there for about 116 of the households, and as a result, you get a lot of blowing litter, it's hard for our vehicles to access those alleys, which are maintained by the homeowners association, and as we've gotten bigger trucks that come along with those tipper carts, it's also going to be a lot of wear and tear on those private alleys. So hopefully, we can find a mutually beneficial situation out there, and it was unfortunate that we didn't catch that before the letter went out, so.
So to clarify, that is a binding contract? I mean, it was, so we would actually need their consent, is that correct?
To amend it, you'd have to have the agreement of the homeowners association. My assumption is that they own the alleys as common areas.
Okay, any other items in that information packet? I guess I'd say with regard to IP number 13, which is the minutes of the June 20th meeting of the HCDC, the Housing and Community Development Commission, that's one long, complicated discussion they had, as best I can tell. So, too much for me to digest in one sitting, and I assume we will get recommendations from them and process them one by one with regard to the topics they discussed. All right, hearing no other information packet items, let's move to council updates on signed boards, commissions, and committees. And why don't we start with Bruce and move to the left?
And I wasn't able to make the last one, Kelly sent in on the joint entities meeting for me, so I have no updates.
MPO, JC, you mean? She said it in the MPO, JC.
Yes, yes.
Joint meetings was yesterday, yeah.
Okay.
Summer.
I'm confused now.
In regards to the MPO meeting, that was Wednesday, July 10th, kind of a lot of the same agenda items that we usually talk about, including the I-80, 380, expanding the lanes, which I'd like to thank Rockne for questioning the effect of potential increased traffic and speeds on the, in the environment. And I can't say that I was really happy with her response to that question, but she, it is a concern, and I know some of us from the council at that, some of the MPO meetings have expressed concerns about the widening of that stretch of the road. Joint entities, I already mentioned that it was great that the school district talked about their climate plan, and that other communities were interested in our plans, which was good. Let's see. That's it as far as assigned committees.
Rockne, did you want to say anything about that information session about the widening of I-80? Did you have a chance to go to that?
I didn't have a chance to go to that, no. But I don't, just want to wait until it's my turn, but in terms of that particular topic, it obviously is a very complicated issue in the sense of, we do have the growing community, certainly the commerce between City of Iowa City and Cedar Rapids is growing every year, and so we certainly get that, sort of that pragmatic, just sort of ultimately nuts and bolts transportation issue. But it is discouraging that, at least at the level of the Department of Transportation, and by the way, the individual employees, they obviously implement the mandates from on high, so I'm not criticizing them in any way, shape, or form, I think they did a great job as far as that goes. But that we're not, we have this great climate change crisis, yet it does not appear to be embedded at all in terms of the transportation planning. They've made some improvements in terms of our commuting bus, you know, we are evaluating rail, but that comes up periodically at MPJOC, and I think that's potentially very exciting. But I do think we just need this reset, and it does not necessarily mean that we're going to eliminate cars, we're no intention of doing that, but I think it's really right sizing the transportation. So hopefully, you know, when we're on the MPJOC, that we just continue to ask those questions so that we are able to actually, you know, make that impact. So, I'll have another comment once it's my turn to talk.
Susan?
The Access Center has their designs out, that has been presented by Newman Munson, and so, looking good in terms of the layout of that, the outside design, and I couldn't make it because of work in this meeting, but between 4:00 and 5:00 this afternoon, they were having a meeting with Meld to give their name recommendation for the facility. So Meld has been doing a lot in terms of the whole branding, marketing, but they were going to reveal recommendations or a recommendation for the name, and since I couldn't be there, I don't know what it was. I don't know if you know, Jeff?
I don't.
Yeah, I don't know, so, that's it.
John?
Nothing to add to what's already been said.
Rockne?
It's looking like our mobile home task force is going to be meeting July 30th. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to be there, I have a family reunion that I'm going to be attending, but it's, as I indicated during our last meeting, our first meeting, I think, was very hopeful. I think we really had all the relevant players from Johnson County, North Liberty, Corleville, and there really did seem to be a spirit of cooperation. We haven't really fleshed out what necessarily the proposals is going to be, but I think the sense there is that what our goal is, is to not be caught flat-footed when the next crisis comes related to this ongoing issue of private equity and purchasing the mobile home parks. So we're continuing to work on that. And related to the MPJOC, just one super brief comment, we also got an update relating to, you know, I don't know if many of the community members have heard, but one of the real big things that the MPJOC did that I think we can all be very proud of, is that we opted out of this, there was a sort of very complicated issue in terms of swapping out federal dollars with state dollars, you know, when you're doing department transportation projects, and our regional MPJOC wanted to maintain our federal wage standards, which for those of you on the labor community, the Davis Bacon, and which will ensure higher wages, higher standards for the employees and workers that are out there making this transportation infrastructure work. And during that MPJOC meeting, they had mentioned, yeah, that you guys opted out last year, and, you know, we're continuing to follow those standards, and that just sort of off-the-cuff statement, I was very pleased to hear that we continue to maintain those standards. That's pretty much it related to that. And the city of Littwee, we haven't met, so it's the summer break, so.
Okay, so Pauline and I met with Janet Godwin and Paul Russler from the school board on July 3, and I'd say we had a very fruitful discussion over a glass of wine, which is not a bad thing, about climate action, about what they were doing, what we were doing, about SROs, school.
Resource officers.
Resource officers, and, you know, what they were planning to do. So we had another discussion about that just yesterday in the joint entities meeting. So the threat assessment task force that the district is considering was a related topic that we discussed. We also talked a bit about the school board election, which for the first time, I think, in our local history is going to be held at the same time as our city council election. So I'm really intrigued to see how that goes, because, you know, it's not something we've done before. And so we talked a little about who, which board members are intending to run for reelection, and whether they have heard any names about other people who might be running as well, and it was a fruitful conversation about that kind of thing. Yeah, that's about it. Nothing to tell you about the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Okay, I think we're done with our meeting, wow, it's the first time we've ended a work session before 6:40 ever. So we will reconvene at 7 o'clock for our formal meeting. Thank you.